Welcome to the January 9th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. It's our first meeting in 2020, so welcome to 2020. Councilmember Bill Shacklet has our prayer and our pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to introduce someone to you. Debbie Church is going to do our opening prayer. And I would like to have folks from groups that are ministries that are serving our community. And Debbie is a part of a group called Family Promise. And it's been in our community for about a year, a year and a half. And she's going to tell you a little bit about it, and she's going to do our opening prayer. Debbie?
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it, Councilwoman Shacklet. Mayor, City Council members and guests, it is an honor to be here tonight, so thank you for the invitation. We are all too aware of the housing and homeless issues that are in our community and the challenges they face, so I am here tonight to share prayer, but also to share a brief couple minutes about the ministry that I'm involved in, and again, Family Promise. This particular program helps families with children. It's specific to families with children that have suddenly gone through a catastrophic event and find themselves homeless. Oftentimes, they are folks that said, "I never thought," or "We never thought that we would be here," and suddenly they find themselves in this position. With Family Promise, it assists them from moving, or moving from homelessness to self-sustaining again. And I'm just going to briefly share a few statistics. You can go on familypromise.org and this wonderful website that's there to share all the information you would need, but here's a few of the statistics. Family Promise has over 200 affiliates across the United States. They have been in operation for 30 years. The average stay for families that come into this program is just 60 days. There is a 92% success rate. That's pretty good. The program provides resources, training, experience, and again, you can find everything you need to know about Family Promise on familypromise.org. Right now, our core group is diligently seeking 13 host congregations, host churches, that will host families one full week, four times a year. So 13 times four gets you your 52. We provide, Family Promise provides the day center, transportation, social worker, the director, all that's needed. The good news is, you ready? We have seven host congregations, so we need six more to be operational. Actually, we could start with four more, so we're most excited about that. Those seven host congregations, I want to lift up St. Mark's United Methodist Church, First Baptist Church Main Street, Highway 231 Church of Christ, Wesley Foundation at MTSU, Cornerstone United Methodist, Smyrna First United Methodist, Bethel United Methodist. You can see I'm a United Methodist pastor, so I've used all my connections in the United Methodist Church. But if you attend a church that would be interested in joining Family Promise to help families with children move again from that situation of suddenly finding themselves homeless to being self-sustaining, you can contact us, contact me, at RC for Rutherford County, rcfamilypromise@gmail.com. So thank you for letting me share a little bit. It's dear to my heart and another way that we can make a difference with those families with children, keeping them from getting caught in systems that'll be difficult to get out, scooping them up and loving them and caring for them and getting them back on their feet. Family Promise, would you pray with me? God of all creation, we offer our praises to you for the breadth of life that you give to each one of us, for the love that surrounds us and for your guidance you give on each of our own life journeys. Thank you for living and loving through us. Loving God, thank you for all who are gathered here to serve, to make a difference in our community. We ask that you be with them when they feel stretched between so many responsibilities, be with them when decisions seem difficult, and be with them when they celebrate the greatest of successes. Help us to become a community that vulnerably shares each other's burdens. Lord, we thank you for our city, for those who have pioneered this great city forward. We remember their efforts and in some cases, their lives given. And Lord, we thank you for those who are in the making to serve, be with our community leaders throughout Murfreesboro, helping them to seek unity and peace as they provide a safe and successful and life-giving place to live. Lord, we ask that you listen to our hearts' longings for the healing of our world, and we pray this in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Church. All right, we'll move to consent agenda. The contract with T-Dot for fiscal year 20, matching transit facility funds, transportation.
No for approval?
Motion second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Ordinance 19OZ08, in Old Business, zoning for property located along South Rutherford Boulevard in Lee Lane, second and final reading.
Evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. This is a second reading that we heard, we had a public hearing on, on May the 2nd of last year. Second reading was held because of a condition that was placed on the approval of first reading regarding the recording of a plat prohibiting certain land uses. And it was determined by our planning department and legal department that a way that we could condition approval of this rezoning request and prohibit certain land uses that were not seen as desirable for that property was to record a plat that would restrict those uses from being developed on this property. The, after reviewing that with the applicant and with our legal department, it's really, it was determined that it was really rather impractical to record it prior to second and final reading because the property is still in the county, which would require the county to review and approve a plat that would be in their jurisdiction for only a very short period of time and that they were not, that those restrictions were not really something that were being imposed by them, but rather by the city. So after internal discussion by staff and with the applicant, what we are proposing, both on this and the next second reading, is that you amend the condition of approval from first reading that the plat recording would be delayed until the, at some point in the future, prior to any development occurring on that property. And so really, we lose no leverage because we can still hold up any kind of permits and development approvals that would be appropriate to hold up. Of course, they could apply for site plan approval, but we, until the plat would be recorded, we would be able to hold up any permits and they wouldn't be able to break ground until they recorded the plat, restricting those land uses, which just seems like a much more practical way to go and much more, much more, much more effective means of implementing those land use restrictions, just because of the logistic issues of recording it prior to second and final reading when it's not actually in our jurisdiction. As I mentioned, we don't feel that this, that we would lose any leverage by doing so. So we would request that you, rather than approve it subject to the plat restrictions being recorded prior to second and final reading, which is tonight, make it conditioned upon the plat being recorded after second and final reading, and we will hold up permits and construction from occurring until that condition has been met. Also, I wanted to point out, we just handed out a revised list of restricted uses. This is slightly different than what was in the council communication and what was presented to you at first reading. After further review, there were several items in there that consistent with the way that our zoning ordinance is written. It says manufacture, storage, and distribution of, and so it was chemicals, asbestos products, and fertilizer. What we have recommended, just as a way to eliminate any kind of confusion about what may go there, would be to limit that to manufacture of those items as opposed to manufacture, storage, and distribution, because there could be some products that could be stored as accessory uses at an industrial facility that may not be the entire facility, but it may be a small component of their operation. So for those four uses that are in that, that are noted there as just being the manufacturer of those four uses as opposed to the manufacture, storage, and distribution. I'll be happy to answer any questions. The public hearing was conducted in May, and City Council passed it on first reading subject to the condition that I mentioned earlier. And as I mentioned, we would request that the list of, or we would recommend to you that the list of uses be slightly modified and that the plat condition, the plat be recorded after second and final reading rather than before second and final reading. Be happy to answer any questions, and this is the same for the next item on the agenda as well.
Any questions for Mr. Blomley?
Matthew, I sent you an email about the earthen berm, and just want to make sure we're square on that. I understand that the planning commission will have some capability to add those things. You know, I think what the packet said that I read Monday or Tuesday night was that that wasn't a condition of the zoning. You know, I understood, just for what it's worth, I understood that to be a condition of the zoning, you know, that that was part of the way that we were going to be okay with this zoning. So what kind of assurance is there that that happens? I mean, at this point, does then now the planning commission be able, you know, they say, "Well, now we don't think the berm is a good idea for whatever reason, and so it doesn't happen." Is that the way it could be, or is there some kind of assurance that we can make sure that happens?
Yes, sir. I think institutional knowledge of staff and of the planning commission, and that particular commitment was made for the next item, the Jernigan property, which they committed to just type E buffer in addition to the strip of RS-15 on this first request. But our zoning ordinance gives the planning commission the authority to require items on a plan to mitigate negative impact in between incompatible uses. And so between our knowledge of their commitment and the planning commission's ability to require elements on the site plan to mitigate that impact, I believe that we're in good shape to require that.
Okay. Any other questions for you guys? I'll make a motion to approve then. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We have ordinance 19OZ23, zoning for property. I want to make sure for the record, it says plan of services, but that was incorrect. So it's just the zoning for property located along Lee Lane, second and final reading, and this is planning.
Move for approval.
Same comments would apply.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
No. Ordinance 19OZ45, amending the zoning ordinance for the city court overlay district, second and final reading.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Brush limb and yard waste bid recommendations associated city-owned knuckle boom truck sale. Mr. Gore.
Mayor City Council, thank you for the opportunity tonight. I know this may not be the highest priority item on the agenda tonight, but.
It is to you though, right?
Yeah, it's all about me right now, so I appreciate the opportunity. Real quick, so I'm going to go fast. Want to go back through this, the population increase that the city's experienced over the last 10 years. We've had about a 35% population increase. The city limits has increased about 12%, and you know, our solid waste force has decreased by about 25% or 28%. Since July 1, we are down one solid waste driver and we're up two labors. So we're just a net plus one since July. So our recruitment of drivers have not been extremely successful.
I don't want to interrupt you, but I had this conversation yesterday, and I think it, now that we have a captive audience and it is all about you, why don't you explain what the issues? We've talked about this for years, why we can't recruit CDL drivers. Can you give us an update on where we are on that and why we're having trouble recruiting?
Well, we, one, the knuckle boom and the solid waste drivers are in the same pay grade as our equipment operators for the streets and the water and sewer department because they literally drive for five or six seconds and have to get out of the truck, use an articulating clamshell arm to pick up the yard and limb waste, and even the articulating arm for the solid waste carts that they pick up. And then in lots of cases, they have to get out and sweep and manually pick up the debris that's left over that the clamshell did not pick up. And sometimes, in some cases, when the carts are overfilled and all of the garbage doesn't get into the side loader, they have to go pick that up too. So it's really, to call them drivers is a little bit of a misnomer because they do have to do a lot of equipment operation and manual labor as well. And when you're paying that person $15.50 for a class B CDL, it's just difficult to find someone who's willing to come at that pay rate and to do that kind of multi-function task, if that's kind of a brief summary.
Pressure.
Right. So I do want to give you a little bit of our performance between August and December of 2019. We've been tracking how we've gone through the city. So we're averaging 19.6 days for this curbside service. That is, I would call this off-peak season, August through December. There's just, was not a lot of yard waste generated during that time. There was some. You can see that there were some months that we had a higher time, but we averaged between five and six knuckle booms, I call them K-booms. These are knuckle boom trucks. These are the trucks that go out and actually have the clamshell. So you can see, we started tracking that back in October, that we averaged between five and six knuckle booms that are on the streets every day to provide that 19.6 days between service. So we looked at three different options. We looked at, you know, meeting that 20-day timeframe. There's overtime where we had streets, we had water sewer, water resources, and we had solid waste, all working weekends and Wednesdays, and we had different, we tried to do some different efficiencies. That was about a $700,000 cost. Again, you're only getting three times every two months. We looked at staffing back up to that 2009 level. That was about a $1.13 million. Again, that's a little bit difficult. We have not been able to recruit and don't anticipate being able to get that workforce back quickly. The last option, we subcontracted the services. This was the most expensive option, but it had the most immediate relief and would provide the service that you all determined to be appropriate, which was twice a month. So what we effectively do, we've got nine knuckle booms in service, or they're operable. We want to sell two of those, and we also want to enter into a contract for this subcontracted service. That would effectively double the number of knuckle booms we have on the street. That would get us to a 10-day service delivery under non-peak conditions, and we anticipate during peak season, when there's a lot of yard and brush and limb pickup, we would meet that 15-day period, which would be that twice-a-month goal or objective that you all had kind of outlined or stated that you wanted us to achieve. So it's a rebudgeting issue that would come forward. We don't have a rebudgeting amendment tonight, but it, for a half a year, you're looking at roughly $576,000 in increased expense. We are getting a more additional revenue from our solid waste fee. We're looking at the $76,000 one-time sale of the two trucks, so that's about a net $370,000 expense to the FY '20 budget. So that would be our recommendation, is that we sell two one-man knuckle booms for the $76,000, and enter into a half-year contract for the $576,000 with Rollins Excavating, who is the sole bidder for that curbside service. And I'm available for questions.
Darren, would there be a buyback opportunity for us to buy these trucks back?
Yes.
If the contract expired and we decided this wasn't a good plan?
Yes, sir. We discussed that with Rollins. This is a three-year contract. It's reissued every year with, well, for one year, and it'll be renewable for two additional one-year terms. And then if, after three years, we determine that the city is outperforming, or we have got our adequate workforce in place, and that we're able to meet those levels of service without Rollins providing that help or that aid, then we would be able to buy those trucks back. That'll be written into the contract.
Thank you.
I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We voted on an item last week, and I think we've all gotten some feedback on the transportation, the due diligence for the transportation facility, and we talked about the opportunity, or it was in the wording for a Greyhound drop-off there. And I just want to make clear for the council that if anything like that is going to come up, I would like that to come back to the council for us to discuss that, because I don't think that's what we necessarily anticipated for the transit facility, at least it's the first I'd ever heard about it, for that.
You're right, and it was misreported. It was a misnomer that that was a Greyhound bus terminal. It's not. Those are, Greyhound builds those, those are private entities. It's a transit center for the city and for RTA and the transportation, park and ride back and forth to Nashville, but it had been discussed as a convenient point for perhaps Greyhound to be, to deliver at. But that's open. We'll bring that back before we make any changes there.
I'd say it'd be important to note that the reason that might come up, in case anybody doesn't know, Greyhound just decides to drop off wherever they're going to drop off and pick up now. Have y'all noticed that? They just on the side of the road somewhere, they just drop you off or meet me over there and pick up. So it's important, we try to, you know, take that into account, figure out a better, you know, a better way for that to happen in our city, so.
You know, we had the discussion six months, a year ago, where Greyhound was dropping off across from Kids Castle, and you know, we said that's not an appropriate spot to be doing that, so I just wanted to make sure that we're not building a Greyhound facility. We're building a transit center for Rover and for RTA and not a bus terminal, so. All right, we'll move to Resolution 19R30, the proposed sale of the city's electric system in operations. Mr. Tindall.
Yeah, this is a, this is a matter that's been before council now twice over the last couple of months, and we're bringing it again this evening. Proposed merger between the city's electric department and Middle Tennessee Electric. Since last discussion, there hadn't been any substantial changes in the transaction, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I have a question. In the transaction, is the city acting as a bank?
The city's not acting as a bank. It's not a banking facility for, and structured, the transaction's not structured as a banking facility. It's an installment sale, so they are paying over a period of time, they're paying over 15 years. There's no money being lended, there's no money being loaned in the transaction.
Okay, they are going to buy all of our assets, correct, in the deal?
Well, there are assets excluded. You know, we've talked about those, for example, the.
Like the building and.
The building, the storage yard, there's a few other.
Right, but what about the 43 million that we have in the bank?
That transfers, it's, the transaction price is a comprehensive price for the entire operations, including the cash, so that will transfer.
So will we get that 45 million back, 43 million back?
Well, the transaction's structured so that the initial payment after the transaction closes is $43 million payment to the city, and then 202 million is structured over 15 years.
I'm just still a little confused. If we have 45 million now, let's say in the bank, and we sell, and the 45 million goes with them, and then they're going to turn around, 43 million goes with them, and then they're going to turn around and give us the 43 million back, my question is, why don't we keep the 43 million since that is accumulated from ratepayers already, and that not be part of the sale? I'm just a little confused, I just.
Well, again, the transaction is essentially all except the assets that I just talked about are transferred to Middle Tennessee, and then at closing, there is a cash payment that comes back to us that happens to be 51. The cash, the cash at Middle Tennessee varies week to week. You know, we get a cash report on a weekly basis, and it varies over a period of time. But in essence, that's the way that the transaction's structured. So the transaction now is accounted for, Middle Tennessee accounts for it separately. It does what we call enterprise accounting, so it's all accounted for separately. And since we value this as a comprehensive operations that is being transferred, this is the most efficient way to structure the transaction.
Now, I understand, well, I respect that, but I don't like the answer, but if that's what you say, that's fine.
Hey, guys, if y'all don't mind, please don't do that. I mean, don't make us, don't make me be that guy to make you stop, so no one else out here is doing that, so I appreciate that very much.
My second, well, question is, how do, what do we have to know that we are going to get those installments, other than a promise? I mean, what, let's say a disaster happens, you know, things happen, let's say we have a recession or whatnot, will we still be getting the money?
Yes, we have a promissory note, so there's a contractual right. We have the standard contractual remedies that go along with any type of contract, so we have the ability to bring a suit and go to court and secure a judgment and execute upon the judgment. In addition, over that 15-year period of time, we have a security agreement, we have a deed of trust on all the assets that Middle Tennessee has, so we're secured in that respect as well.
I just want to make sure, in this transaction, that I still feel like, and I. And then at closing, there is a cash payment that comes back to us that happens to be $51. The cash, the cash at Middle Tennessee varies week to week. You know, we get a cash report on a weekly basis, and it varies over a period of time. But in essence, that's the way that the transaction is structured. So the transaction now is accounted for, Middle Tennessee accounts for it separately. It does what we call enterprise accounting, so it's all accounted for separately. And since we value this as a comprehensive operations that is being transferred, this is the most efficient way to structure the transaction.
Now, I understand, well, I respect that, but I don't like the answer. But if that's what you say, that's fine.
Hey, guys, if y'all don't mind, please don't do that. I mean, don't make us, don't make me be that guy to make you stop. So no one else out here is doing that. So I appreciate that very much.
My second, well, question is, how do, what do we have to know that we are going to get those installments other than a promise? I mean, what, let's say a disaster happens, you know, things happen, let's say we have a recession or whatnot. Will we still be getting the money?
Yes, we have a promissory note, so there's a contractual right. We have the standard contractual remedies that go along with any type of contract. So we have the ability to bring a suit and go to court and secure a judgment and execute upon the judgment. In addition, over that 15-year period of time, we have a security agreement. We have a deed of trust on all the assets that Middle Tennessee has. So we're secured in that respect as well.
I just want to make sure in this transaction that I still feel like, and I guess I just don't understand the terminology, but I still feel like we are the bank. But that's, you know, I just want it to be legal. That's what I'm saying. I just want it to be legal.
I'll just point out that the Tennessee Attorney General has issued opinion, issued opinion back in 2015. I've previously shared this opinion with council members. And I think the concern here is whether this transaction constitutes the lending of credit by a municipality, which is, it's kind of a, which is prohibited under the Tennessee state constitution. But this opinion says that a municipality does not lend its credit when it sells real property in exchange for a promissory note with security subordinated to the developers' other lenders. So that's a case where the security interest of the municipality is a lower priority than the, than other lenders. Here, where the city is on the same level with Middle Tennessee's primary lender. So this does not, this transaction is not the, the final conclusion of the Attorney General on this issue is that this type of transaction where the city is selling an asset and in exchange for that asset is affecting or is accepting deferred payment over time, that does not constitute the lending of credit as that term has been interpreted by courts in this state.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker and Mr. Kendall.
Yeah, I would add, as far as the structured payments over a period of time, there is an advantage to that. There's several advantages to that. It allows Middle Tennessee to absorb that, the transactional costs without any rate impact to the ratepayers, which is an important consideration that we had in going into it. And the city as well is able to both manage the income as it comes in, but also earn interest on that income as it comes in. So the transaction itself is actually enhanced by the installment payments over time.
Thank you, Mr. Tindall.
Hey, so if y'all do me a favor, I'm getting onto the guys back in the back for clapping. We need to talk into our microphones so those guys in the back can hear us and hear us talk. So make sure everyone talks into their microphone, please. Thanks, Craig.
Yeah.
Okay, I have to admit, this decision tonight, for me, has been very hard. I've spoken to lots of people on the phone. I've met a lot of people in person. I've had a lot of email from people. And it's very surprising to me, really, as I talk to people when I'm out because sometimes people recognize me and say something. And it was surprising that there's a lot of people in our city who could care less about this transaction. I mean, I don't know if it's, they just don't know what's going on. But that's kind of evident in the way we vote. I mean, you know, the small number of people that vote. I wish we could have had a referendum, but I understand, you know, the law and says we can't. At first, when I was talking to some of the Murfreesboro Electric employees, they were saying that they didn't want us to sell. But now they are on board. They have looked at benefits that are very good, I think. They are looking at different merge, different merging-type things, and it's good. I know that the electric department, they operate tremendously. I know they can still continue to operate. If we say no, they won't be operating, I don't think, full, full speed because they've lost some employees. But I think, you know, they've done a fabulous job, and I think they would be very efficient. If you don't mind, Mr. Jones, can I ask you a couple of questions? Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm always, this is just me, my agenda's always looking out for people.
Sure.
And as an elected official, all of us, that's our job to look out. And my mom told me before she died, she said, "Madeleine, you're going to have hard decisions on the council. Get the facts, study the facts, ask questions, do all the research you need to do, and take your emotions out of the vote." And that has been so hard for me, but I try to go by that. I've also done a lot of praying about this. As far as our ratepayers, now I had my bill checked with you all to see if we were with you all this month. I gave my last, my last bill, and my bill went up $7. Okay. Then that's when I came knocking on your door for you to talk to me about that. And it's my understanding that I'm in a category called low-consumption category. So the low-consumption category people, their bills will go up some. The commercial people, their bills will go down. And the middle people who actually use electricity, you all tell me I really don't use it. You, in fact, you asked me to burn candles. But that's okay. That's okay.
It was probably fair, though, right?
My people come over to my house and they come with flashlights. I understand. I understand. And coats in the winter. Right, right. So, so I understand that structure, and I'm correcting that, right? In the three categories, commercials going down, in the middle, who use, people who use electricity, they'll be kind of stead, steady, and then people like me, you'll feel a little bit. Okay. My question is, I have two questions. My first one is, can you all, or do you have, or can you promise? See, we have people in our community, a lot of people, that own fixed income.
Sure.
And, you know, I don't care what goes up, they're going to have the same money coming in. Do you all have a program in place, or will you all be willing to have a program to where some criteria that they can qualify for to give them help on a decrease in their rates? That's number one. And number two, there are a lot of people, especially the elderly people, who their homes are not sufficiently insulated. Will you all, or do you all have, if you don't have, will you be willing to have a program? Now, I know we have the economic development in our city, but will you all have a program, a developer program, to help the people get their homes insulated? Those two questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, so a couple of things, and you are kind of in a category all to yourself with regard to efficiency. Very low consumer. So let me speak generally about rates, and then I'll hit the piece about low income and then the other two, the other question also. And I may ask a colleague, is, where's Robert White? Okay, Robert, you be ready. Because the program, congratulations. The program we're talking about, Robert is helping to institute at Middle Tennessee Electric, and we're happy to bring it also as part of this coming together. So when you talk about the rate comparison, the way I like to put it is, and we talked about this with our benefits, too. When you, when you look at them from a distance, Middle Tennessee Electric's and MED's rates from a distance, and you look at it on average altogether, they're extremely comparable. In fact, when we draw, we graph those rates out, the graphs are, the linear graphs are on top of each other. They're that close. And depending on the category of the rate and depending on your consumption, it can vary a little bit, but they're very, very close together. So we'll talk about two things that you brought to me the other day, and that was residential and small commercial. And so when you look at the rates the way they are right now, if you are a low consumer of electricity, then your bill, MED, is going to be a little bit lower. If you're a higher consumer, especially in the summertime and the wintertime, your bill would be high, be lower, Middle Tennessee Electric's rates. Now, as we bring these rates together over time, if we come together, we're going to do that over a five-year period. That's, you know, TVA has given us that window to do that. But number one is that rates, year number one, would stay the same. They wouldn't change. And then over time, we would begin folding those rate structures together because TVA would want us to do that. So folding those together. Now, something that we're going to seek to do is, you know, number one, I should say, that we, with the foundation that we have financially, with the economies of scale we'll be gaining, we'll be able to have incredibly low rates for a long time. I think we'll be unique in the valley in the way that we're set up and the advantages that we have. But what we'll be seeking to do is Middle Tennessee Electric, and this is whether we come together or not. Certainly, we hope we do come together. But something that I want to see us do is to provide rate options for members, for customers. That's something we don't, that's something we, none of us have right now. If you're a residential consumer, MED or MTMC, and most utilities, it's one rate, one choice. What we want to do in this coming together is to create rate options for our consumers. And for example, on the residential side, I like to have a rate that takes into consideration low-consumption users. Some people want time-of-use rates. So we want to create at least three options for customers to choose from because customers want options. So we should deliver that, and we'll work to deliver that. So we're going to seek to create those opportunities. That way, people can maximize their efficiency whichever way they want to go. So that's something that we're excited about. I can't stand up here and promise exactly what that will look like because so many things could happen. So, but that's what we're going to seek to do. Now, with regard to those who are lower income, and I appreciate what you say, Ms. Skels Harris, and your passion for that. So those who are lower income, not every single case, but they tend to be those who are actually higher consumers of electricity because their homes tend to be less well-insulated.
Right.
So we do have a program that we're working on with partnership with TVA that we're going to be bringing to bear. We've already made the investments to do it. Again, would love the opportunity to make this part of the coming together. And again, Mr. White, if I could ask you to come up and speak to the particulars of that program and, you know, briefly. But we're excited about where this may lead us. So, Robert, if you would.
Sure. Vice Mayor Skels Harris, thank you for this opportunity. You mentioned, would we have that commitment to make sure that we pay attention to those who may not be able to pay those bills, especially during the high-bill season? Well, I'm one of those people that feel like actions speak louder than words. Well, one of the most foundational pieces and principles of the cooperative model is the commitment to community. And we've been so committed to the community for over 80 years, and our commitment is to make the lives of our members better. So in 2003, we founded a foundation called Share and Change. And since 2003, our members, not us, but our members have contributed over $9 million to over 500 organizations who have made the lives of our members better. Part of that commitment by our members was also dollars that are used in all four counties that we serve, the community help agencies who administer a program to help those who may have Murphy visit every now and then and need some help with some of their energy bills. And they administer the program. They vet the applications for those who request the dollars. And so there's a commitment there for anyone who may have that need, regardless whether you're a tenant or a homeowner. Well, starting in 2020, we're going to ramp it up even more with the program that our CEO talked about. And it is a commitment with TVA for an initiative called Home Uplift. And what this does is to provide a pool of dollars. We'll put dollars into the pot. TVA will match our commitment. We'll also try to find local organizations who also want to get into this to make the lives better for our members. And what happens is folks, lower-income residents who are homeowners can have access to dollars that are grant dollars, not loans, but grant dollars to do energy efficiency upgrades to their homes because that's what happens. Too many times, they can't afford the energy efficiency upgrades to help lower their energy bills. And so that is just another commitment that we're going to have. As a matter of fact, this started out in Memphis last year as a pilot program, and the average grant dollars were around $8,000. And so can you imagine someone who is, who is struggling to be able to get an HVA system improved or whatever would now have access to some dollars to help them lower those energy bills?
Good. Ms. Skels Harris, I forgot to mention the small commercial rate. I mentioned residential. But in the small commercial category, with the bill comparisons we talked about, Middle Tennessee Electric's rates on the small commercial side are lower. So I forgot to close that button up. But, Robert, thank you for saying that. Any questions? Thank you.
I just, that's good. I just want, you know, we are a community, and we are a family, and we don't want to do things that is going to exclude some people or, because a lot of people, they just can't help the situations they're in. And as a community, we need to come together, and when we make changes or anything in our community, we need to make sure we encompass the whole community. And this is a serious question. Somebody like me, a low consumer, now, if the deal goes through tonight, do I sleep with my lights on or turn more lights on? Or how do I, I mean, how do I get, keep my bill from going to some credit?
Turn more on. I tell you, you need to turn more on. You know what I mean? But so you're in a category all by yourself there. So again, so, no, again, like we mentioned before, if we're successful in our coming together, then year number one, rates aren't going to change at all. And then, you know, something that we'll work together on will be a cost-of-service study to determine what the rates will be year two, but we'll bring those together. Now, you know, PD, you mentioned the other day that one reason that our rates are a little, our bills are a little higher for a low consumer is that our fixed charge piece is a little higher than MED's. But that's something that you guys are having to raise, and whether we come together or not because TVA is increasing that fixed cost component in the rate structure. So that's just something to consider as well. But we'll be in a great position with regard to rates. Again, when you compare us to our neighbors to the north, and I've got great friends at NES. They do a great job. But everybody in this room, whether you're MTMC or MED, your rates are 10% approximately lower than NES's right now. So we're in a good position from a rate standpoint.
Yeah, I just didn't understand, you know, me alive, how my rate can be higher than the funeral home where it doesn't really matter if it's hot alcohol in there, you know? You know, but I'm okay. There's something wrong with your rates. I'm going to tell you that.
Is it time for our 10-minute break yet?
Madeleine, I'm going to send my three kids over to stay with you, and I guarantee you, they'll get your electric bill higher. There's not a light ever turned off in our house.
And thank you, Chris and PD. You all have been great, and thank you for putting up with me and the million meetings I've had with you. Thank you.
All right, who else has questions, comments? I've gone through this. I sat in my office tonight from 4:30, and PD, you'll be proud. I pulled out, I've got every budget over the last five years. So I pulled out every budget on MED and went through and was trying to make notes. And, you know, really, I think we've got two choices. And I want to say, you know, there's 150 or 180 people who are in this room, and you won't hear a political official say this very much. I get why that people are leery of this discussion. You know, we made a mistake. I've been on council for 16 years, and we made a mistake not raising taxes over a 20-year period. So, you know, we raised taxes last year, and I get where the public says, well, you're going to get a bunch of money, and you just raised our taxes. So I understand that rationale. It was a mistake that we let our tax rate get as low as we got, as we got. I mean, I paid less taxes in, last year than I did before the tax increase, or two years ago. So our tax rate continued to go down, and, you know, I don't, I think a lot of us here, and y'all have heard me say this, we beat our chests saying we hadn't raised taxes in 20 years when wages were going up, fuel's going up. You know, it's harder to provide services. And so, you know, if I could go back 16 years, that's a decision we would, we would do differently. You know, we talk about TVA raising, having rate increases, and everything in the city was going up, and we just kept saying, no, we're good. We're good. And that was a mistake. So I understand the scrutiny on people having distrust on, you know, what we're going to do with the funds. But I think we got two choices. We've gone over what the sale would bring, and we've gone over the benefits. But, you know, the other option, and I don't think, you know, with the employees of MED who are sitting here, you know, throughout this whole process, if someone who's gotten shafted a little bit, I think it's the employees because you've had uncertainty. And, you know, we've had all these outside groups who've come in. And, you know, I woke up this morning, and Ashley was asking me why I was mad. And I said, well, I saw a news article last night where apparently I've been sending personal emails out. And I can tell you, we forward from our personal email accounts all the time. I got an email where a constituent emailed my twin brother, and my twin brother emailed my business account because somebody was emailing him. For any of us to think that we're doing stuff behind the scenes, it just doesn't happen. You know, so, you know, you get mad because you get questioned on what your ethics are when you're just trying to make the best decision for Murfreesboro. And as we start going through this, I, you know, I've asked PD, and PD... And as we start going through this, I, you know, I've asked PD, and PD, you've been super helpful. I still say if we had had the amount of information five years ago, who knows where we would be back in 2014. But, you know, PD gave me information, and I tried to go through and chew on it to put it in a spreadsheet and looked at it 90 different ways. And, you know, the ultimate thing that we have to look at is whether we sell or not, we're going to have significant investment that's going to have to be made in our utility system. We've, the number you sent me was $93.5 million. So I discounted that and said, what if we only spend 75? Well, ultimately, what it ends up meaning is over the next five years, we're going to, the revenue that we have coming in, based on the debt service we're going to have, it's about a $2 million shortfall. Now, you're not probably going to spend all of that at one time, so even if you don't, we're still going to have to borrow money, even if we use cash to be able to subsidize our system. So, you know, the question is, do you borrow money under MED? Do you borrow it under the city of Murfreesboro? How do you do that? And, you know, I think we're in a good opportunity where we're not talking about a bad system. We're talking about a good system. But at the same time, you look at it and say, how much better could we be if we're working together? You know, a lot of the investment, y'all have already paid for that investment. The thing I selfishly look at and say, you know, the citizens of Murfreesboro, if we, if our utility is sold, we're 20% of your customer base. So when you're paying for investments that are in the city of Murfreesboro, we're only paying for 20% of it. There's 80% of the people who are paying for the other investment. So, you know, regardless, I think that's something that, you know, the number I came up with is $74.8 million is we have to have investment. That works out to be roughly $112 a year extra that's going to have to go on our bills, not counting some of the other increases. So, you know, that's going to have to happen. The other thing that, you know, I looked at, so invest, if we keep it, we're going to have to have more investment. We're going to have to look at employee retention, you know, which means that we're, just like the reason I asked the question earlier with Darren about getting commercial drivers, we can't get commercial drivers because we're competing against CUD and other private companies that we can't pay that amount. So it's a no-brainer that if we keep it, we're going to have to pay our employees more to compete with what's in the surrounding area. That's, and that's just math that we're going to have to pay that. The number we came up with is roughly $4.5 million more in operating costs a year that we're going to have to spend if we keep it. And then, you know, the other part of that is not only salary adjustments, but it's employee retention. And, you know, I think it's, there's a, there's a great argument to keeping your business small. I love keeping my business small because I know the people that I work with. But at the same time, people look for mobility to be able to have opportunity to grow in their job. And when we've had the opportunity where people don't like leaving, there's not much mobile opportunity, mobility to move forward. So that's, that's a bonus. The next thing I want to hit on is the referendum. So my, I think our job as staff is, we get information from, or excuse me, our job is council, we get information from staff, and we're supposed to punch holes as much as we can in that information. And that's the one thing I respect about this council. So I called the election commission and said, hey, I want to clarify this referendum issue. So I think there's a misnomer out there that we can just, I sat down with Craig and talked about this, there's a misnomer that we can just have a referendum for anything that we want to have a referendum for, and that's not the case. We have to have statutory authority to be able to hold a referendum. And so TCA 752-132 is the TCA code. It specifically says that if that, which has to do with the vesting of an electrical, I mean, or electric company, if that does not meet, if we do not meet that, we do not have the authority to ask for a referendum. And so we've got the opinions, they didn't come from us, the outside attorneys say we don't meet that. Now, that could be a question for the AG, but regardless, we do not have the statutory authority to be able to call for a referendum. The only option that we have is if we do not meet this TCA Act, we can lobby the legislature to have a private act for us to be able to have a referendum. But here's the kicker, that referendum is advisory in nature. So in other words, we're going to create the most expensive poll in the history of Murfreesboro is what we would do. And I would tend to tell you, that's not what we're elected for. And I think that's why you have to have statutory authority to be able to hold a referendum. Otherwise, every difficult decision, politicians would just be holding a referendum to see what, what the winds are blowing. So, you know, I don't think there's any, if we had the statutory authority to be able to do that, that may be a different discussion as a council. So, you know, where I've come on this, and I sat down with Craig, he'll tell you, an hour ago, and I said, Craig, I'm trying to, tell me what I'm missing. You know, tell me what I'm missing that, you know, from our community. 20 years from now, we could miss maybe having an electric system that's worth more, or maybe have a little more income coming in. But at the same time, the residents that are growing on the west side of town and in our territory areas that we can't serve are going to Middle Tennessee Electric. And that's the thing I think that is very uncommon in Murfreesboro. We've got two water utilities. Everybody, there's a lot of people who are on CUD, there's a lot of people who are on Middle Tennessee Electric, there's a lot of people who are on Murfreesboro Electric, there's a lot of people on Murfreesboro Water and Sewer. So, you know, I think the thing that's a blessing in our community, and this is really what we look at, you know, I get on social media, and I hate to admit this, that, you know, I'm like, man, this Murfreesboro sucks, why do we live here? But seriously, I mean, you get on there and you're like, man, this is awful. But you look at what we have in this community, you look at the people who are sitting here, you look at how our organizations in our community are growing, people are moving here, jobs are being created. We lead the state in job creation, we lead the state in education, we lead the state in parks and recreation, we lead the state in road and transportation. So y'all have to be doing something right for all these people to be moving here and for us to be doing what we're doing. So, you know, I have to check myself and say, it's not bad. This is a great place to live, and these are great things that we're getting to talk about. And I think that's one of the reasons that I can't find a reason that this is not a good deal for the city of Murfreesboro. So that's why I'm going to be voting for it. And I will say, Chris or PD, if y'all had the husband and wife that are up there in the Middle Tennessee Electric and Murfreesboro Electric, that's, need to take a picture of that on joining together.
Yeah, I'll make some comments. You know, I've said about what I think I need to say. I've listened to, you know, I was a proponent a month ago when this was in front of us to give this another month because frankly, I said, you know, if this is a good thing, it'll be a good thing a month from now. And, you know, there has been a lot of hullabaloo, you know, and I've tried to kind of read everything I see out there and think through it, and frankly, there has been nothing material to me in any of the stuff that's come out. It's all just a little this or that. I get a kick out of this, y'all like this, I thought about this today. When you read stuff in the paper or see stuff on the news, this is one of those things that I just laugh about is, you know, if you read an article tomorrow that said Rick LaLance admits he's a man, I mean, you know, you'd all of a sudden go, damn, well, what, what was he saying? You know, well, it's nothing, it's just the words that you use sometimes make things seem like there's some, you know, secret this or secret that, you know. It's ridiculous. Somebody made a comment to me that said, well, wouldn't you be bothered that the mayor had a discussion about this a year ago with the city manager? That he wanted to find out if he thought this would be a good idea? No. I mean, that's exactly what we do as city council people. We go to the city, the city manager, and we say, hey, this is an idea that I think might be good for our city, can we explore it? And I don't go around sending out Facebook posts or calling the newspaper to say, oh, I had a meeting to, you know, say I thought there was a good idea. I mean, that's just how things get started. There's no secret about it, it's no back-room stuff. It's disappointing to me, you know, I'm not going to get too far in that. Let me just, let me just say this to you. There's two baseline things that I've gone through with this, and then a result. Is this good for the people in Murfreesboro, and is this good for the employees? Well, I've gotten no less than two dozen employ, you know, emails, calls, at least, I mean, three dozen employee calls, emails, whatever, you know, to say, hey, we really like this idea, we think this is going to be good for the employees. You know, and really, I think ultimately, as far as for the city goes, I'm going to say this because I think it's on a lot of people's minds, as long as we do what's right with the proceeds, I think this will be a really good thing for the city of Murfreesboro. And that's going to be up to us to hold up our end of the bargain on that. So I'm going to support it, and I'm going to do what's right with the money, if we do it.
Any other comments? Kurt?
Hey, Craig, could you give us an overview of what MED makes a year and what the city receives from MED? Because I think it's been posted that we have a cash cow that we're selling, and people need to know the truth.
PD might be better than what they make, but I'll tell you what the city receives, and it's about $3 million a year, a little bit more with our increase of our tax rate last year. That's it. MED's run as an enterprise fund, so they set their rates based on their cost of service, and they collect those rates and they run on their own. And there's a provision that'll, in the TVA contracts, that allows them to pay a specific portion of that to the city as, in lieu of taxes. So a tax equivalency is the way it's calculated. But really, that's only, only $3 million. That calculation doesn't change regardless of the revenues that Middle Tennessee receives. It stays the same. It's based on assets. There's a small portion of it, I think it's based on revenue, but generally, it stays about the same. So it's not, it doesn't, it doesn't contribute a huge amount, relatively speaking, to the city from a revenue standpoint.
Okay.
And it's not allowed to under the TVA agreement. And it wouldn't be under, you know, that's the right way to run a utility. So I'm not criticizing the way that it's set up. It's certainly an enterprise fund and structured that way, and it's the correct way to do it. On the flip side, though, I will say, as an enterprise fund, if for some reason something were to happen and the revenues weren't sufficient to run the electric company, the city would be liable. We'd have to put tax dollars into that. Same with the bonds, the bonds are issued in the city's name, using the full faith and credit of the city, and we back those up. If revenues from the electric department weren't sufficient to cover those bonds, the cities would, the city would make that up.
Okay. Well, just like everyone else up here, we've had some sleepless nights about this. We've had emails, we had texts, we had phone calls. But I think what's most important as elected officials, we're here to decide what's in the best interest of Murfreesboro. When we first started talking about this in 2014, I was definitely against it. No way I was going to vote for it. But things have changed. We didn't even get this far in 2014. We didn't even, we didn't even get to a dollar amount in 2014. So what's, what's really important about this is we have somebody that wants to buy our electric company that's been a community neighbor for 80 years in our community. That stands out. We've got somebody that has strong leadership. I think what they have at Middle Tennessee Electric membership, they've shown us that they can get the job done. They also shown us that they've been a good employee for our city. And I think what, what our mayor said that really stands out to me is, out of all of this, we have not really thought about the employees of MED. They've gone through this for the last four or five years. When is enough enough? And I think if we do sell, our focus as a council with the money should be to create a community board, create a model of the Christie-Houston Foundation if possible. Make this money work for generations to come. I think that's the positive way of looking at this. Because if we've got money at hand, we can make this money work for ourselves. We don't have to do everything that's in the CIP. And with the, everything that we have on the CIP, we can start over. And I think that's how we should be looking at this. And I really feel confident that we're doing the right thing if we decide to vote for this.
Eddie?
I would say sold and be done, but I don't want to make the front page tomorrow, so I'm not going to do that. At the two or three, the reason I say that is, two or three nights ago, I made that comment, and I didn't have the authority to sell the school system, nor did I sell the school system. But, but, but there were people talking about pulling the funding away from the school system, and if they were going to take the money, I said, you need to go ahead and take the system, basically. And that's kind of the context of what took place a couple nights ago. But the, I'm really hoping that our decisions are based on multiple things, and those things are the employees, the ratepayers, and the city. And I think the Murfreesboro Electric and Middle Tennessee Electric have some of the most phenomenal employees. And if you don't believe it, just catch them when they're out there climbing up and down all of the buckets, and when they're out there doing their service and checking your meters and all the things that they do, that, that they just go unnoticed because they do it so well, and our lights are always on, so we don't ever question whether or not the service is good, because it's great. And that applies to both Murfreesboro Electric and Middle Tennessee Electric. They do a phenomenal job, and if anything gets conveyed to you guys tonight, I hope you understand that we appreciate what you guys do. The money that's involved in this transaction, as far as the $43 million, that's ratepayer money. And that's money that was paid into Murfreesboro Electric, and it was money that was being accumulated, in my opinion, to build a headquarters that was going to cost a substantial greater amount than that amount of money. But the, when the money is transferred to Middle Tennessee and comes back, then it becomes taxpayer money. And then, I think at that point, it becomes a completely different scenario because then we have to have the wisdom of this council, I hope, to make decisions on where that money winds up going and how it's spent, and whether or not some of that money's preserved for perpetuity. Because, let's face it, for 80 years, we've had the ability to get in lieu of taxes from Middle Tennessee or Murfreesboro Electric. And Middle Tennessee Electric is going to pay property tax, but they will not be paying the in lieu of fee. But, but what we're going to see is the potential of this money earning much more money, which will be advantageous to the taxpayer of Murfreesboro. When, when that money comes in, if that money's spent wisely, that's money that we don't have to collect in sales tax and property tax. So, and it's not a desire to spend the principal, but it is a desire for me to see some interest coming in off that money that will be greater than the amount that we're receiving currently from Murfreesboro Electric. So there is a financial gain for our citizens who are not even ratepayers. The, this, this is a really great opportunity, I think, for our city to merge two great companies and to create a situation that will have synergies that will be far beyond anything that we would be capable of doing in years if we were to not make a change. Because with Murfreesboro Electric, we're going to have to spend a great deal of money if we don't make this decision to sell. And so, and again, it comes down to the TVA. It's, we're just one step in the process. There's other people who are going to be involved. Middle Tennessee Electric will be involved even before TVA's involved. But I appreciate the efforts that have been put forth by Chris and PD because they were on the radio yesterday morning trying to explain to the public what it is we're doing and why we're doing it. We've had open easels in the rotunda out here for people to come in and look at and get a better understanding with employees that were there to try and explain the pluses and to hear the concerns of the public, so that we understand that if you've got a concern, we wanted to address it. And there have been things that have been changed in this contract because of things that people have told me on the side and said, hey, Eddie, have you thought of this? So for each one of you, and especially the employees, because you are the ones who are most affected, you are part of this process. And I thank each and every one of y'all for being part of the process, and for every one of y'all that sent me a letter and said, I appreciate your support for this project and this merger, I thank each and every one of you personally. Because it meant something to me to hear from you guys without me having to go out and solicit it. For those that I solicited while you're out there working in your buckets and stuff, and you took time to stand and talk to me for a few minutes, I appreciate that very much as well. Because sometimes you can accomplish more standing next to a bucket behind Hardee's where they're working on some power lines than you can, than you can accomplish in this meeting tonight. So I sincerely thank everything that you guys have done in this process to make it a good process. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I hope that we make the right decision and that 10 years from now, we'll look back and go, it's the best decision the council ever made. So, thank you.
Mayor, I wanted to say a few things, and, you know, a decision that affects our community, the community that we all love for years to come, deserves thought, consideration, and there's some people that need to be thanked. First, I want to thank the people on both sides. First, I want to thank the people on both sides of this issue, those that feel like this is a good idea and those that feel like this is a bad idea. The process that we, I'm glad we took an extra few weeks to hear from the public, to process information. I can promise you, each of us up here, each of my colleagues have spent time, effort, like Vice Mayor Scales Harris said, have been in prayer about this decision. Because we understand the seriousness of it. This is nothing to be taken lightly. I would encourage all of us, as we go forward, to find ways to respectfully dialogue over issues. It's not the last time you're going to hear that from me tonight. We don't just have a story and a perspective to share with others. We need to learn how to use the two ears that God gave us more and the one mouth that He gave us a little less. Because when all we do is speak our mind, a lot of times, you're never heard and you never hear the perspective of another. We have a lot of serious decisions that go ahead. Even in this merger decision, there's going to be serious decisions to be made in the future. The one thing that I, that wasn't brought up that I'd like to just affirm with you, a consideration that was given by one of our council members, and it wasn't me, that pressed for two representatives, additional representatives on the MTE, Middle Tennessee Board, to represent our community. And that's been agreed upon in the negotiations. At present time, your electric board, MED, is represented by a board, or the decisions are made by a board that's not elected, but is simply appointed by the recommendation of our city ma, of our mayor and approved by our city council. So, it's kind of removed from the ratepayers. So, in this sense, when you have an elected representative on a cooperative board, you basically have, it could be interpreted to have more representation than you presently But, as I was thinking about this, there's no way to unring the bell. When you make a decision, all of us make decisions regarding our personal lives and our business lives every day, once we decide to consider something, things change. I was telling some folks today, the culture of both organizations, Middle Tennessee Electric and MED, has shifted in the last six months as they begin to consider this as an option. MED is not the same as it was four years ago, two years ago, or even six months ago. And I understand that that's as a result of a lot of decisions that we made to even consider this as an option. The initial consideration of this as an option changed the culture at MED. What I consider the responsibility of this board, my responsibility, is to make a decision which is in the best interests of our community, ratepayers, and in the long-term sustainability of reasonable prices and high-quality service. If we turn this down and we move on back to the way things were, things will never be like they were. MED is not what it was. The culture has shifted. Some of the things the mayor presented as to what would have to apply, we would have to make an investment, a significant investment in MED for it to be what it, what we would hope it would be in the future. So, I can tell you, oh, there's another group I want to commend. Because a lot of people don't understand this. You know, the assumption when you read something in the paper or you see it on social media, it's easy to assume that there's some evil intent. The thing that's frustrated me is that I've had to operate in a silo making these decisions. I haven't called my colleagues and said, "What do you think? Did you hear about this?" We can't operate like that. We have to operate in a silo, making those decisions, asking the questions that we think of, and hoping that the collaborative effort of when we get in front of the cameras and we get in front of the public, the collaborative wisdom that we share with each other somehow arrives at the right decision. And when we make a decision tonight, I can promise you this, and I almost, I think I can speak for the rest of our, my colleagues, when the vote is taken, we are all for whatever that decision is. Nobody's going to sit back and say, "Well, you know, I didn't." We're going to make the decision and we respect each other to have come to the conclusion that we vote on. But we truly understand that the process does work and it will be the right decision for our community as we see the facts presented to us today. And I want to commend my colleagues because I know each one of them have worked real hard to try to come up with the right decision. We come at different areas. You can hear by the questions that we ask. Madeline's questions tonight, profound questions that I, you know, I hadn't thought of. But yes, they're good questions and to get that kind of on the books, that we're caring about the less fortunate in our community. I'm glad you asked those questions, Madeline. There's questions that Ronnie has asked that I think needed to be addressed in the midst of the, in the midst of our deliberation. And regardless of what we do tonight in a vote, we will respect each other. I have only gained more respect for my colleagues and the people that serve on this council with me for the amount of time that they put in to try and define the right answer. We don't come at it with, "This is the answer and I'm going to make you believe it." We are trying to find the right answers and we all try to do that in the best way we can with the experiences that we have and try to make, because we love this community. You don't sit up here if you don't love this community. And I hope that moving forward, that the process will have taught us something. How do we respectfully dialogue over difficult issues as a community? Because the collective wisdom of our community is what is the right thing to do. And if we don't listen to each other and if we don't act with the assumption of good in people, instead of the idea that there's something crooked going on here, that's the most saddest thing about our culture in our country today, is we don't assume the best in people. We're looking for the critical, something to disbelieve instead of something to believe Going forward, whatever the vote is, I will be for it. Whatever the collective vote is tonight, I promise you, I will support it and I know my colleagues will as well. And I want to thank everybody that's been a part of this process. It's not pretty. It's like sausage making. It ain't pretty, but this is democracy. Don't get discouraged when it doesn't go your way.